... and we'll let Mary start.
Hi, everybody. I want to thank everybody for talking. I'd like each of the candidates taking time out of what can be a very crazy schedule. I want to thank all of you for taking time out of your day on a not fun evening. Can you hear me? Is this coming through?
No.
Not at all?
No.
No?
No.
You like background noise?
I swear to God, it worked this morning. It was beautiful.
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you. Just yell, like that? Okay. Yah, yah, sorry. I also want to thank Mark Schreiber and the Fire Department for letting us use the facilities. This was really nice of you guys, and we appreciate it a lot. This is an excellent place to do something like this. And to my knowledge, this is the third time we've done it. I would like to thank the library board for hosting this. And in particular Cindy Barnes, Margaret Dow, and Nancy Hill for all the preparations. They helped with the treats and arranging and everything else. And I already thanked the candidates, but I'll thank you because you guys are the most important ingredient tonight. What I'd like to do this evening is start with them introducing themselves. And I'll do the details about here in just a minute. I've got a whole list of questions from you, the public. There have been some cans around, there have been some emails coming in to the city, Facebook page, and personal contacts. If you don't hear your specific question, we'll probably get there. Because there's a lot of them that are very similar, so I'm going to work on sort of a topic and sort of pull stuff out of that. Okay? And in between those, I mean, I'll offer to open these up, these general topics, to you, the public, and see how you want to learn more about what their responses are. We've got about two hours. So for introductions, let's hold it to about three minutes. If you've seen Nancy do this, it means you've got about two minutes gone. Okay? So why don't we start down at the far end? Tell us your name, what you do, about your name in Sutherland, and why you're here tonight.
Ron Cotts. I work for Kent Street. Lived here for about eight years, I came back. Originally from Warren City. Lived in California, and lived in Colorado.
And what brings you to tonight's council forum as a candidate?
I'd really like to see our streets safer for our kids. We have a lot of kids that run around. And we also have a lot of people that speed in this town. And I would like to somehow see how that gets stopped, so our kids are safe.
Thank you.
My name's Pat Nelson. Hi, everybody. I've lived in Sutherland almost my whole life until I turned 18. Went to college at Iowa State. Lived in Johnston for a couple of years. Worked for West Bank. I've recently had the opportunity to move back. I work for Flanagan State Bank now. Got a mortgage office in Spencer. I'm here to join the council because I'd like to see the town clean up. It is very clean already. But there are just some things that, you know, certain areas of the town that I'd like to see, you know, spruce up a little bit, stuff like that. And I also am very, 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 very... I want to help the schools. I don't want to see our small schools dwindle. I want to see them grow. That's something that I'd like to be a part of, as Sutherland, helping out our community and all the bright schools. That's something that's very important to me.
Natasha?
I'm Natasha Pettit. I'm born and raised in Sutherland, pretty much. Worked as city clerk for four years, and now I'm deputy treasurer at O'Brien County. So it took kind of a year to get myself settled with my new position. And now I just want to get involved again and be a part of the community again.
Thanks, Natasha.
I'm Rebecca Webster. As you guys know, Jamie's my wife. She brought us back here. She took the job three years ago. As the officer here in town. I was born and from there and raised here till the elementary. And then we moved away and we slowly made our way back. As you guys know, my mom moved back to town, so... Yeah, I'm just here because I'd like to get more involved with the town. Make some changes, make some good changes. Just trying to help our community grow better, bigger, and better. Try to help get everybody together.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jay Scotts. Lived in Sutherland pretty much my whole life. Took off to... I didn't work for a little while for college. Working in Northwest Communications over in a big town of Hadlock, Iowa. If anybody knows about that. Been working there for about 20 years. Some of the things that I kind of was leaning towards the city council is, you know, I've hit the rifle at age of 41. A lot of here, that gives her old enough, and I wouldn't mind volunteering, contributing. I joined the Ruritan. So I like to get involved. And with my experience at Northwest, we have service in over 60 communities. So I work with a lot of the city councils, the mayors, businesses, various groups. So I'd like to bring some of what I've seen over east in some of those areas and bring it back to the public if it fits for us here, so.
Thank you all very much. Bruce Engelke is in the room. Mr. Engelke, would you like to introduce yourself and share the same range of commentary?
The only thing I've really got to say is who I am. And I think everybody knows that Bruce Engelke. Been around here most of my life. Not lived in town, but around this area. Just want to keep doing the same thing that I've been doing for the last 12 years. Hopefully keep it going and tighten it up.
Thank you. All right. There have been, out of this staff, there's five or six questions that ask which motivation, in general. Why are you running for council? What do you want to change? What do you want to do? What are your goals, your priorities? Do you have an agenda? If so, what is it? These are specific questions that were asked and kind of paraphrased. So why don't we start with you, Mr. Cotts?
Thanks. I don't have a specific agenda or anything like that. I just... Some of the things that I see over there where I work, I see what other cities are doing. And what we do in Sutherland is fantastic and great, too. But I think some of the things I would like to see is some more attempts at grants and those types of things. Try to go after some of these funding mechanisms that are out there for small communities. And I like a lot of the programs that would be defined, Sutherland, those types of programs. I like those. But I just want to kind of be a part of looking for ways to improve Sutherland. And I think grants and those types of programs. Again, you know, I do agree with Ron on some of those things. You know, I've got three kids, 13, 11, and nine. Some of the... It's not... I don't think it's a world-based safety thing, but just, you know, some of the... There are some trucks that go around town pretty quick. So just some things I'd serve up for the kids. Learn that, yeah, I mean, just make sure that everything is a nice, clean city. But like I said, I don't have any agenda. I just have a lot of ideas from what I've seen, from my experiences over the years, and bring it to the table.
Um, yeah, I don't really have an agenda. I do look forward to, you know, pursuing aggressively the grants, to help fix roadways, to also, like you said, spruce up Sutherland. Just try to have a better outlook on Sutherland. Help make things, you know, look a little better, just, you know, the old houses, the weed and debris, just that kind of stuff. Also, I'd love to bring the community together more, you know, like citywide garage sales, stuff down at the park, bring the community together more as a whole, opposed to separately. I'd love to see a lot more activities in town, just as a community, as opposed to separate, so.
I don't have an agenda either. I just felt that I have education from being so in city clerk for four years. And now on the county level, I just feel like I bring a lot of education, knowledge back to the table. And, you know, same thing, I'd love to see us go after more of the grants and do improvements and progress where we can. And I would love to see the sense of community back in Sutherland as well.
I guess I don't really have a direct agenda. Again, primary focus is our sense of community. I don't want to see things like the Ruritan Ice Cream Social leave. I want to see lead and breakfast continue to be a thing, stuff like that. Of course, beautifying Sutherland with grant money. I actually work firsthand with grants, first-time home buyers, stuff like that. To get some people into Sutherland instead of out. That's just a few of the main things I'd like to focus on.
I really don't have an agenda either. I would like to, like I said earlier, make our streets safer for our kids. Make the town more attractive for people to, you know, want to move here. Pretty much.
That's your priority. Ladies and gentlemen, please, ask your questions of these folks based on what we just talked about. Why do they want to be a council person? I'm sorry, Bruce, did you not say anything to that?
Pretty much just weirdly everything is been said.
Okay.
Hey, I have a question.
Mayor can't ask questions.
So I'm listening, and I'm just curious. All have said as a goal, or motivation, or an agenda, to bring back a sense of community. For me, right now, I'm kind of interested, where's the lack of sense of community? And what specifically are you guys thinking is missing where this community needs more sense, I guess?
Together?
Yeah, I don't under... I guess I understand when you say sense of community, you want to encourage that or bring that back. What's missing, what left?
Yes, one of the ideas that I kind of had in that regard was, I feel like when I was growing up, kids were more... Teenage kids were more about help thy neighbor, help the elderly people, get garbage out, mow their yards, clean their sidewalks. You know, I guess in my mind, that was something I tried to get my own kids involved in as much as I could. It was more family members than anything else. But I would like to see us maybe kind of build some programs like that to try and get the youth of Sutherland and some of our elderly together, helping each other out a little bit more to try and build on that sense of community. That's one of the things I think we've lost as a small town.
I think I'm one that didn't say anything about a sense of community. I happen to think that...
I wasn't yelling. I wasn't yelling, I was just curious.
So for me, I mean, I love Sutherland. I mean, what we got going on is a pretty cool thing. Some of these other communities, and I keep going back to that because I do go to 60 other communities, and I see different levels of smaller towns where they get smaller and smaller. There's been no investments or anything like that in the downtown areas. And then these buildings start closing down, start... I mean, I've seen so many buildings and homes falling down. And it just... And here in Sutherland, it's, I mean, it's... To me, it's kind of a beacon because I don't really see that whole lot. We work towards beautifying our homes. We take care of, I mean, the tree thing and the $750 fine, I don't know about that, but it's still, we still ran around, and we got that taken care of. So for me, all my life, I've always been super proud of Sutherland, so.
Any other comments to the case question?
I think we do do a lot of community things. But I think Labor Day is really the only big event that we have as a community. And I would love to see more events like that. Not necessarily that big or anything, but, you know, the citywide garage sales of everybody coming together and talking, everybody coming down to the park, just having... Even the Ice Cream Social, I mean, we have that as well. But kind of snowballing off that, making it maybe a little bit bigger and having some activities for the kids to bring them down to the park, as well as for the adults. I'd like to see some bigger community things like that more than just once a year.
As a community, I think we have a great community. Being on the Fire Department, I see how supportive the community really is. It's like Natasha said, you know, you grow up as a child and you help your neighbor or help the elderly. That'd be great to see that around here more. Because I know in the wintertime, it's really hard for some of the elderly people to clean their sidewalks. So, yeah, that's a good idea, you know. Getting more of the elderly and the children and the kids involved, and maybe they can work together.
I have a question. I'm kind of concerned about the infrastructure here in town. We've got a relatively new room, but we have a very old sewer system. What kind of thoughts are you having and how we can update this before this could be a huge problem? And you're kind of working towards it, I'm afraid. And also, you know, other things I've had, some of our streets aren't in the best shape anymore. Is there any kind of program that's in place to do so many upgrades a year? Or to fix so many lines of, you know, amounts of pipes, you know, for the sewer system a year? Do we have anything like that in place? I'm not able to get up to the level of moving, so I'm not very well up on that. But I just wonder what your concerns are about that.
Well, I'm not familiar with you. I haven't been following the city council meetings all that much. And I'm not really familiar with what kind of... What we have for funds or what such side, certain projects or those types of things. But I did talk with one of my colleagues that had been sitting on the city council for the city of Fenton. And they're going through the same thing with their infrastructure, their sewers and those types of things. I have some experience with that. I've got a couple of Reynolds, and I've had to replace some sewer pipes around here. So I really, I'm not really familiar with where the current city council is at with looking at that. But I'm sure that everybody's aware of the water main rates, those types of things. So it definitely needs to be looked at. And I do know that there are grant programs out specifically for that. I think it's... I don't want to say the name. I think it's NIAF or something like that going to help cities with those types of projects. So that's, that's Ron, I don't know.
I know those three of you at least said that you'd like to see more grants. Are you willing to go after these grants by writing them?
Absolutely.
Or suggest it?
No.
It takes some art to write a grant.
It does. And I am prepared to take any training or anything to help me write those. I have written a couple of them, nothing extravagant. But I am very excited to aggressively pursue grants that could help us with the roadways, with the sewer systems, with anything that could help Sutherland out.
I'm also very willing to, you know, do the grant process. I've been asking questions on the county level on some of those things and just trying to educate myself on what's out there, what's available. But yes, I would definitely be willing to put in the work for that. You know, I only have the one child left at home. The rest of them are grown. And she graduates this year, so I'm going to have a lot of free time in my evenings very soon. So I'd like to fill it with something.
Bruce, I would quite take it... I've never actually written a grant. I would definitely take a interest in taking a look at it. But I would probably be looking at, looking at some of the organizations where you can give grant writers. And I happen to know a little bit about it for the Palato County. They have a handy little casino. There are a lot of casino grants for the surrounding areas, so... And my boss happens to sit on that gaming commission. So I've seen how they actually grade a lot of these grants. And I do understand how big they are. I mean, one little thing could cost you the entire grant compared to somebody else that was writing and they get hundreds of grants from cities. And there's a lot of competition for those. So I've been around grants, revolving loan funds and those types of things, people find for that. So I've seen it. I don't know. I wouldn't necessarily have the time, but I would definitely take interest in finding a way to make that. I definitely have an interest in grants and those competitive programs.
On the lines of infrastructure topic, could you guys give us a little bit of an outline of what you see as a city's responsibility to its citizens in terms of services, assets, amenities? And how do you think those things should be funded from where we are to what you see as should be, as a goal?
Could you repeat that?
Probably not exactly. Cities have responsibilities. And those responsibilities are fulfilled through the city council process, through the governing process. What do you see as the services that a city is to provide to its citizens, to its taxpayers? So services, responsibilities. What do you see as the assets? What are the good things that community should have that you don't think Sutherland has or that you would like to see better, and how? And then what do you think, what kinds of funding do you think you would... What do you know about funding for the, for services and for amenities? Amenities, libraries, parks, museums, art centers, recreational programs. That's my mind. But I'm asking you, did that make better sense?
It did.
Sorry. It was a multi-part question. Okay, services, what's a city got to do?
I think, I mean, we're, we're rising. You know, the park, we have a new park board. So we're doing the best that we can with that. It's rising each year. The library, I would love to become involved with the library. Bring children into there. I was at the last city council meeting, and I was kind of saddened by the number of children that were in the library checking out books. And I would love to see that number go up, as well as encourage the children to go in there. So, I mean, whether it's activities, or, I mean, I know Jamie does some. But I would love to see the library grow, as well as, I mean, the park could use its offers. But as for funding, I'm not a miracle worker. I just have ideas. I have great ideas. It's just trying to get them. So I want to try my hardest to get there, but I don't want to promise anything.
Can you give us one of your ideas? Share one of your visions with us, please. Whatever, one of the things.
So I agree.
What would you do? What, what's your vision?
My vision is to bring more kids in. I know very little of the youth here in town, which saddens me. But I would love to invite their parents as well as them and get them into the library, get them into the community, maybe meet them, then get them to kind of become one with the community.
I guess one of the things I would like to work towards, you know, maybe in a four-year term, it's not possible to completely get there. But I would like to, you know, see what the possibilities are of taking the park shelter and turning it into an all-year-around type shelter with a little bit of heat and some AC. Maybe we can get, you know, people in our community using it year-round like some of the other parks in the area. Have more events down there. And I would really like to see us work towards upgrading the park equipment. You know, I know water and sewer also has to be, you know, worked into a five-year plan. It needs to have a solid plan for where we're going with that, with a starting point and an ending point. You know, that's something that would take multi-years and potentially starting in one area of town and working our way to the other. So that is something I think we need to work on as well. And with doing the sewer and water, you know, you're probably going to be doing your street upgrades at the same time. So I understand that's going to take a lot of money. You know, there's not a ton of grants out there finally for water, sewer, and streets. But I think it's something that's planned to at least be set in place for.
You know, I would have to, I mean, the roads are probably one of the biggest things. We have, I mean, made some updates in the past, not extremely recently. But like she said, you know, you kind of want to kill all the birds with one stone when you do stuff like that. So getting all that focused is going to take some time. It'll take a lot of good people on the city council to do that work. And, I mean, that's just something I'm more about to work towards, but something I would like...
Mr. Engelke, you want to chime in? Everybody shied away from funding on that one. So we'll just save a little time for that one later. Does anybody have questions about, to these people, about what they see as the services that a community needs to provide to its citizens, to its residents? Whether it's streets and infrastructure, we talked a little bit about it, its emergency services. Those are the ones that pop into my head. Come on, anybody have questions about those kinds of things?
Oh, me again?
You raised your hand. I saw that.
Yeah. So I have always a perfect thought, a perfect idea in my head, but I'm not voting member. You guys are all going to be the voting members. And so participation in our budget workshops, which is where we develop the five-year plans, where we focus on what's next, what's next of the critical areas that need to be worked on. Well, grants are amazing. I'm not a good grant writer. I've tried, but there are resources in, that are available to us, right? To assist with that. And so I guess my question would be, and I, and it's hopeful as council people coming on, is the commitment to work on that beyond the one meeting a month and or special meetings? And then I was really going to go somewhere with that. And it drifted away out of my head. So I guess I would wonder, you know, you guys don't know what it's like to be a council member, except for me right now. So you can't say, you know, I'm going to go in and fix all the roads and I'm going to encourage the vote to be yes on that, because you don't really know what the budget is. I mean, you do, and you can get it, but... But is there availability of your time? Is there availability and your desire to work without pay to try and get some of those things done, where it's not just, we're at the meeting and we've got to make a decision or table? Which would, to meet, whether it's infrastructure, getting ideas for the shelter house, the park, and the library. I mean, Natasha knows how the budget works, but that's all going to be a learning experience for you guys. So I think in order to grow Sutherland... So I think in order to grow Sutherland, we need good roads, but we also need affordable housing. And so that might take more than just one meeting, you know, a month. How do you see this? A commitment? Are you going to jump up more than just an hour every Monday, one Monday night a month? Are you guys going to be, I'm serious. Are you going to be dedicated? Because seriously, isn't just about showing up for the meeting and all of a sudden reading through the packet the night of the meeting. I know Amanda drops the packets off on Thursday. And to me, if I were sitting there, not that I want to be or would be, but I'd at least look through it to know what I was reading when I got there on Monday. And so oftentimes, we sit at the council meetings and we watch her read through the packets. And then they start to talk about something that's on the agenda because nobody's really looked at it before that night, it gets tabled. And so when a decision's made, it takes a couple of months before everybody's had enough time to think about it. So I just would hope that everybody would take time to, before Monday night's meeting, know what's going on so that they can discuss things and make things happen.
Sure. So I know exactly what you're talking about. I just been to our company's board meetings every month. We come up with our board reports, our financials, operating, all those types of things. Send them out and as they walk into the board meeting, they're opening them up. So I know exactly what you mean. They have no idea what we're going to assess for the night, agendas. I mean, just don't, they just haven't looked it over. So I understand that. I also understand for, I don't know what the budget is or anything like that, and like I said, I don't know its plan, but I do understand the cost of streets and all that. Very expensive, I get that. So I just don't know where you guys are at or what money you guys have. I don't even know how much money Sutherland has or where it's invested or what you, where it's at. But as for, you know, one night a week, I mean, it's not really compared to a little kids' football team. And I think I was obsessed with working on it at nights, during the days, Saturdays. So I'm not, I'm not one of those type of people that open it up one hour and just spend one hour on the city because it is important to actually focus on the decisions and plan things out. So yeah, so I get it.
Well, what I would just like to say too, I think our subcommittees need to put in more effort. You know, there's the subcommittees for the water and sewer, the streets, the park, or I guess not necessarily the park, but you know, the subcommittees, when I was city clerk, I could tell they weren't having discussions with each other really at all. And that is not my would like to see change. I would like to see those smaller subcommittees of council members set specific times to meet with each other and discuss the topics that are coming to them at the council meetings and put forth the effort on what they're supposed to be overseeing.
But don't forget, you can't have a corner.
Right. Right. And I understand that in most of the subcommittees are only two people per councilman. You know, those are what are set by the mayor, you know, for council members to oversee those certain areas. And I just, I felt like some of those people weren't talking to each other very often. And that's something I would be wanting to work on.
The problem with that is two council people cannot talk about city business.
Two can.
Two can.
Three can't.
Several have three. Three can't meet.
All the subcommittees have two.
Have two.
As of working in town, anytime that I need to meet up with somebody after hours, I am more than welcome to meet up with them. If anybody has, in town has any issues, I'm willing to meet up with them so I can bring them to the city council and we can discuss it. And I can do that at any time.
I'm glad you brought that up because of all the years I've been on, I can't tell you how many times I got called at midnight, one in the morning, why isn't my street open? My husband has to go to work. You've got to be ready to explain why that street is not open without pissing them off. I understand that. There's a lot of stuff behind the scenes you don't realize.
That falls in line with policy. I'm going to back up a little bit. I'm going to ask each one of you to answer this question and then I'll get back to you, Liz, if you have a question there that I touched out and I apologize. Let's start with Rebecca. When was the last time that you were in either, and you guys can answer either the library or the park, or at an event there? And why?
I was just at the park the night before last, picking up trash with my foster kids. And then the library, honestly, it would have to be Labor Day weekend. I haven't, I have not been to Labor Day, but I was just down at the park picking up trash.
I was just at the park Monday night with my granddaughter, playing for a while. We two picked up some garbage and cleaned rocks and stuff off some of the equipment. And we were just down there playing and enjoying the nice day.
Just at the park last week, Ellie pushing around the swing. As for an event, I'd say Labor Day too. I probably haven't been at an event there since.
Last time I was at the park, I was down there with my daughter and my grandkids. They came up visiting from California. So that was probably a month ago, maybe? Park, or the library, I didn't tell you the last time I was sitting there.
Uh, let's see. The park, it was at least Labor Day I was down there. I joined the RurTAN also, so I helped do the kids' races. And then at the library, yeah, we have our meetings in the basement of the library. So yeah, and before that, I've been in there when Santa Claus Easter Bunny going there a couple of times. But other than that, I was, but I started with the RurTAN and started going down to the library. I was really impressed with the library, so very impressive there.
Anything about the amenities immediately available, right off the top of our heads with the city that you'd like to ask down? Changes, improvements?
I do. Library, fantastic. It's improved so much since Nancy's taken over and the library is good. And Labor Day celebration, if no one went, if everyone was down there or not, tons of people. Becca started kids' games, kept the kids occupied. She got the younger people involved in it. And that's what I want to see. I want to see the younger people involved in the city. And I thought that Labor Day celebration was great. Tons of people in the park. I would like to see that more often through the year, but Labor Day was a good incentive to start forward. A good job for everyone who was involved.
Just mentioned they've been to the library. How long since you checked out a book or have you taken one out for your child?
Probably three weeks ago, we had the foster kiddos in there picking out books. It's their favorite. They love it in there.
I can't remember the last time I checked out a book, but I did recently clean off my bookshelves and donate everything to the library.
I haven't been to the library since I was college. To a library, but to a library in Sutherland, I was back.
Lot of children's books there, lot of young people's books that don't get checked out.
Oh, it is?
Yes. And there's not books. Good job you did. What was it? For how many books did you count this week? Yeah. Books there available for people.
You know, it's not just about the library, but there's, you know, we're really working hard about reading programs because the library now as of today for a century is all about reading and reading books, you know, bridges. But the programs that Nancy's bringing in, the POW speaker, the Grace on Spirit Lake. But, you know, I thank everyone for setting up and being an active part of the library. But I'm going to acknowledge that, yes, there's workings in the community that need, you know, success.
Do you want to say?
So I probably shouldn't say sit down, but so for libraries, for libraries, I'm an internet guy, so I know what that has done. But what our company, what we do is we'll go to a city and because I can provide broadband internet connections to whatever I want, we usually provide the library a free internet connection or whatever they want to do. We purchase computers for libraries. We put internet connections at the fire stations, city halls, all those types of things. So I know a lot of the programs, what they need the internet for, and what they can do on computers. But as for actually checking out a book, I haven't done that for a while. But I have worked with libraries and what Sutherland is doing, it's awesome.
So I just want to let everyone know you can check a book online. We're online now, online catalog, and there's even audiobooks, those sort of things. So physically, I will be there, although we like you there, obviously, but you do have that option if you're homebound or not able to get to the library.
Rear doors don't work. Okay. Nitty gritty. Is everybody okay? Move on. Okay. Here's a nitty gritty question. What's more important for our city right now? Building new homes and commercial space or rehabbing existing, better utilizing our existing homes and storefronts? Natasha, we'll start with you.
Well, I mean revitalizing our storefronts is definitely important. We want to keep as many storefronts as we have down there. Building and maintaining homes, they're both important. So I mean, you don't want to lose what you have. You don't want what you have to deteriorate. But at the same time, I do foresee our city growing and I do foresee that we're going to need some new homes just because there's so many limited going up for sale. So I think they're both important and I think, you know, as a city council member, potentially, you know, you have to find that happy medium between the two.
Is that something that the city should do or is that something that the private sector should do? What role does the city there?
Honestly, I think the city needs to take a role in the Williams property at least on the north end of town. I do think that needs to be developed. I think they need to look into, you know, kind of how Spencer did it with growing some of their area out by Walmart. So I think discussions need to be started. I think it needs to be, you know, in a plan for the city in the next five to 10 years.
Some of the buildings downtown, I mean, we've got a few down recently. For much of that, whatever we can save, I would obviously like to see be saved. But in the private sector, some people are disregarding their buildings and I mean, we can't really help that as a city council. Often Natasha just said, we, sorry, I lost my thought.
It's going around. Even now.
Yeah. And sort of like the low-income housing that she's talking about by the Walmart there in Spencer, that's something that the whole state of Iowa has to look into, not just Sutherland as a whole. So obviously, there's going to be a lot of that coming in the future. Lots of ideas to look at. Yeah, it's something we're definitely going to need to take a look at if we want more people moving into Sutherland.
Don't mind. Both of these guys finished their conversations.
Waiting for your answer. I have a question.
Go ahead.
You know, yeah, I'd like to see the city maintain downtown, keep the facades or maybe update the sides of the storefronts. The only thing is, a lot of that I think is on to the business owners to also flip some of the build to update their facades or make them nicer. I think the only way, or that's one way you're going to get more people to want to move to town. Some of the houses in town need to be tore down because that's another reason why, you know, people will drive through and go, well, I really don't want to live here if these houses are abandoned. So that's, I mean, that's one thing we can work towards as a, as a whole community, I think.
I'm all for working on what we got right now. You know, working on the downtown, working on the building facades and whatever else we can that's, you know, a quick line approved that we can reach and take care of what we got. Because I agree with, you know, we want to attract people to live here. It's got to be an attractive community. You can't, you know, can't let it go. And I've seen that. I've seen where trees are grown on the blue tree and that type of thing. And it's just, it's just not something that you want to see. But, you know, I also come to the realization, I mean, it takes funds to be able to do that. So you do what you can. The other thing, I'm also all for, you know, if it makes sense, commercial development to look at new tax revenues. I mean, you got to look at that if you want to be able to do something. You got to look at bringing incentivizing businesses or what you can into town, bring employees with them and those types of things. It's just, it's what you have to do. There's really no other way to do it. You have to incentivize businesses and people to move because you can have a nice looking town and have a job for them. Both.
I think our downtown looks pretty great. I think the store owners keep them looking real nice and whatnot. I do agree also with, you know, obviously the abandoned houses. Unfortunately, it's not free to tear them down. So it does take time and money as well. So I need as many grants or as many, as much as you can apply for to get those houses torn down. I would like to see the houses torn down and then built new instead of, you know, subdividing out again, you know? I mean, I'd like to see houses coming into town and not out of town. I'd like to see houses built where houses are being torn down, where we have open lots, where weeds are just growing. I'd like to see houses being built there as well as anywhere in Sutherland.
Have any of you been able to get a hold of any books or anything and done any reading up on city government and how it's run?
I Googled it. I did Google it yesterday to try to prepare for tonight. It did take me for a whirlwind. I don't feel prepared, absolutely not. But I am more than willing to learn. I'm more than willing to go to trainings. My job is very flexible with me and my lifestyle. So if I need to take a day to go to a different town to just kind of learn about anything, budget, anything like that, I'm more than willing to learn.
Because I know there's a lot of special meetings that are called and so.
I guess when I was kind of leaning on, so I've been to board meetings, those types of things, I kind of got, you know, the how they're run. I've been to a lot of city council meetings. It seems like whenever I go to one to just present, you know, what we want to do, I'm always the last person on the agenda. So I get to sit through the whole thing. So I have an idea of what is about. I have ideas about, you know, budgets, government budgets, those types of things, expenses. I mean, I think I got a pretty good grasp on that. So I have a really good idea. Really interested in, you know, Jack and Tom saying about the calls. I have over, I have close to 10,000 customers. And when they're angry about their internet and they get angry about their internet, I get to take those calls. So I know what you're talking about. So I have a feel, but not the exact, but I'm really interested in seeing the city side.
Well, and the Iowa League of Cities offers excellent training for incoming council members. I would be very interested in attending that. And I think any of the people sitting up here with me would also be interested in taking those courses and learning.
I'm sorry.
With the Iowa League of Cities?
Yes.
I was just going to say, there is training once elected for the Iowa League of Cities, but you can go ahead and get on their websites now and without developing a sign, and there's a difference.
Bonnie, Patrick, what do you think? Okay. I have this question. I think we got a pretty good handle on how you're going to deal with the people in town and their complaints. So, that's all.
Don't want an email.
Yeah, it's just a commentary. You're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like in my daily work, I get to hear people. I mean, I get to deal with the community a lot. If they can't reach out to me that way, I mean, I'm sure I'll get calls, I'm sure I'm getting knocks on my door, but I'm more than willing to hear it all, because we're here to represent you guys.
Yeah, I mean, if they have a complaint or something like that, like, in my general theory is, you know, let's see where they're coming from, try to understand what the issue is, and see if there's something, if it's even my responsibility, or in this case, the city's responsibility. You have to draw a line occasionally, but see what you can do, and the nicest way to help that person out, but, I mean, you have to follow policy and procedure. And sometimes that's not very helpful, but it has to be.
Kind of a little backwards here. You do have a city code book that you should all read, because that is the city code. There's a state code, but you have a city code book that you should, you didn't know.
It's available on the website as well. Yes, it is.
It's like 200 something pages, I printed it off the internet.
Yeah?
Yeah.
You should all read it.
Well, and whoever's elected will be given a manual, and I would recommend to them to read it cover for cover.
Yes.
Okay, I've been asked this question, I've got it at least twice here. There's two of them that kind of work together, so I'm going to ask this all together, and then when this gets answered, I want you guys to chime in with whatever your concerns, I want you to dig into what they say a little bit. How do you feel about the weed and debris problems currently happening in our city? What would you do differently to encourage property owners to keep their property looking nice? What is your take on weeds and debris? What do you think of junk cars? So, they're all boxing, right?
I'll go first there. So, I've got a poor standing experience with this, with some of my acquaintances. So, with the weeds, I mean, it was getting so out of hand at this one place, I just went over with my chainsaw and all that, and just wiped everything out. So, weeds and debris to me, I just, it just drives me absolutely insane. If they have, I mean, weeds, debris, junk cars, I mean, I heard it was a loophole if you license them, they can move as many as they want in their backyard and that type of thing. But it does, I don't like it. And if, I don't know, and I didn't read the code book, so I don't know if there's any penalties, or, you know, you have so many number of days, but I think, I would explore it, but I also understand where some people are coming from, so there's a fine line. But, I mean, to me, I would look at it. I would look at the weeds and debris and cars and just stuff, so I would, I would look at it.
Um, I agree. It took us a couple of years to get ours under control, but I, I think that says a lot about Southern. It shows who we are, you know, somebody comes driving through town and they just see somebody's parked car with two tires missing, you know, it's nothing, it's not doing anything for us. So, I extremely dislike trash or anything really in the front yard, just as an ornament, as well as weeds. You know, I wasn't very good at pulling my own, but now that we have it, it looks a lot better. I think that weeds need to be under control. There's, there's only so many excuses that you can come up with of why you can't go out and pull your weeds, why you can't go out and cut your grass. You know, it's your lawn, own it. It's, make it look beautiful.
I guess I think one of the places we need to work on as a city is, let's face it, some people are lazy. They have no desire to read the code of ordinances or know what is expected of them as homeowners. So, I feel like we need to create some kind of education, some kind of flyer or something to hit the basics, the how tall your lawn's going to be, you know, the parking issues, some of those key issues that we seem to constantly hit on with every homeowner. So, I almost feel like we need to have some kind of, an educational flyer or something put together to help educate the community, but then after that, it is something as a city we need to stay after in order to keep things from getting worse.
I like what Natasha said. As for the debris and the grass, it's just, like she said, people are lazy, some people don't know how to mow, or some people don't want to pay somebody to mow their yard, the sitting cars, what we can do is, you know, hand them out flyers. This is what we're going to allow, this is what's not allowed. But we should also, with the cars and stuff, give them a reference to get rid of the cars, not just say, "Get rid of it." We should take, you know, proactive stances and tell them where they can bring it, what they can do with it, how much it might cost them, and what's going to happen if they don't.
You can always donate it to the park, or what do you need more for?
But, you know, some citizens may not have that, you know, thought to do. So, that's kind of where I feel like we need to educate some of our citizens a little bit more, so that they know what their obligations are, rather than just coming at them, boom, 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 you're going to get a citation in 30 days. Some people may not have that understanding of what's really expected of them.
Well, I don't want to interrupt you. If we want to try to get more people in this town, the, when they see the weeds and debris when they drive through and the junk cars, they're not going to want to live here. So, that's one thing, you know, we have to stay up on, is if we want to make it inspiring for other people to live here, and we need to keep up on keeping all that clean.
Okay, I agree wholeheartedly with all of you that we need to have weed and debris and junk cars taken care of, and everybody was in agreement. The only thing I was missing, that hearing from anybody, is how do you plan to encourage the property owners to take care of their property? We all know it needs to be cleaned up, but how are we going to go about encouraging them to clean up, maybe without the citation, just approaching them to begin with? Does anybody have ideas for that?
Well, that's kind of an individual, personal thing, because, you know, what homeowner may be receptive to ideas that you have for them on how to help them, the next one may not be. So, you know, that's really a difficult question to answer, because it all happens on a very personal basis, and how they react on that moment that you're coming to them. So, you know, I do think we need to, as a community, try to come up with some options for homeowners as to what is available to them. But until, you know, you sit a group of people down to really hash out that idea, you know, it's really hard to say how each person would react. But I would like to see us have handyman or something, different price ranges of something we can offer to some people that maybe don't have the ability to do some of that. And again, with the education of the pamphlets as to what's expected of them. Some people moving into the community may not know what's expected of them, because their previous community, they were allowed to do certain things. So, I think, you know, we need to start with education first and foremost.
And can I say, we are old people, community, many old people.
Absolutely, and that's, that's why, you know, some of it may be a lack of ability.
Right.
So, until you know what their personal circumstances are, it's hard to know what they may be looking for, for assistance.
We do have one girl that's excellent help, but we need more of her.
Yeah, she's only one person, and she's stretched pretty thin.
Yes.
I mean, there's a, there's a couple options. I mean, I think Thomas Nelson, I think he also, you know, just having loans name and number convenient, but that's also reaching out, asking why, why do you have debris? Why, why is your yard so long? You know, is it because you can't get out there and do it, or is it because you're being lazy? So, I mean, it's a fine line for sure, but the only way you're going to find out is by asking. So, if you find, you know, if it's because we can't get out and do it, we have options, like she said. Shar, I think Thomas Nelson does yards, and there's a couple other kids here in town that have been trying to outreach and help with mowing lawns and with snow removal as well. So, I think it's more of just communication on why it's not getting done and how we can get it done.
I don't mean to rain on anybody's parade, but that's, those are kind of the nice floppy ones. The Weed and Debris Committee, we're actually undergoing nothing with the elderly. We're battling some serious issues with structural housing problems, which the city's not in business to obtain real estate, which we're unfortunately inherently. And so, with weed and debris, it's not, and I don't mean to offend anybody, it's not about mowing the yard. We're going into court and fighting at great expense and trying to recoup people who have eight, nine, 10, 11 vehicles. They move the vehicles when they lose the case, and then they, a few months pass, and we're back to square one. We're doing the same thing. We have a person right now who is openly defying, flipping us off, and he's 35, 40 years old, and his house is, that property is a huge eyesore, and it's bad. So, my, my opinion is, is that, that we've got to be prepared, and new councils will be a lot to be prepared for keyboard warriors, people fighting back, daring you.
How much are you willing to spend?
Yeah, and how much are you willing to spend to fight? I mean, I would love to have a utopia and a beautiful city, but, but it's going to cost money. So, if it's a conservative issue and you're not about spending money, then that's something you're going to need to take into consideration if I appoint you the Weed and Debris Committee. So, it's because we're going to court, and we're issuing $750 citations.
That's not what's going to go with the junk cars and those types of things. I mean, you look at other communities and those types of things, that's why we have $750 citations, because that's the only thing that'd get people moving. In fact, smiles and handshakes and talking to's, it doesn't work.
Yeah. So, I don't expect anybody to respond to what their, what their physical, you know, positions are. I just need you to know that it's either going to cost a little to fix it, or we're going to all have to turn our head and try and explain to everybody why we're not fixing it.
And then you're also going to be dealing with the people who really don't care, and they just pay their fine and make it even worse just to make your life miserable. I mean, we have a property out in our neighborhood that the city has been battling with, they've got wild animals going in and out of there all the time, but it used to be a daycare right next door. I mean, and the city's hands were basically tied, because it's a constant fight, and going to court and everything to finally get it done, and it's taken a couple of years. So, there's those battles that you're going to be dealing with too, and having to make decisions on, you know, are you going to be able to handle dealing with that? I mean, how do you feel about?
Bonnie, I was on the council and mayor of 17 years. I've been off 10. The same people are dealing with it.
They're behind us and they're doing it to make you uncomfortable. And to tear down a house, the city pays for it, but property owner still owns the land, and it's only assessed to their taxes. So, that's why you see empty lots, is because in order to sell them, they have to pay for what it costs to tear the house down on it.
And some lots are over $20,000 in this community. Yeah, and no one will pay that.
So, that is why the city can't afford to tear down a house, because they don't have the money to go around tearing down houses. If you look at your taxes and it tells you how much stuff gets on the bottom, do you ever read that down there? You get that twice a year, and you have to do all this stuff out of that. Mountain, so you don't get the land, the owner still has the land, and you're stuck with the bill to tear the house down, and the only way you get that back is if they sell the land, there's a lien against it.
And I don't mean to cut you short. Did anybody have any questions about reading weeds and debris? Okay, with that said, there's been a lot of talk about the expense of controlling weeds and debris. What are the revenue streams and sources for a city? And what is tip?
I had that shared out there.
I was going to say, I'll take the unit, but I can't.
It is a tally.
There's a cheat sheet that's broke down very, very easily on what tip is, town at city hall, please go and ask Amanda for it. I created it years ago, it's still...
I know what it is. No, revenue streams. They just outlined something that everybody here wants to address, wants to cure, and they just told us how come, at least one of the major reasons why it's not. What are the revenue streams, since that might be an answer to some of those issues to a city? Broadly speaking, not specific, just how does a city get money to operate?
Isn't that a question? Not a fair question for the new council.
Don't comment about these ones.
One of the, I mean, I'd only give you money to operate off of the tax, property taxes inside the city, that's one way they get it.
And then your water and sewer.
And then you have your water and sewer and trash bill, which of course, they have to pay a trash bill to kind of do that.
And water.
I said water.
Yeah, we only get one part.
Yeah, you only get a portion of it, but that's, with all that combined, is how the city gets their money, and then there's, there's other, I don't know how Southern does it, but I know there's other ways cities can get money too.
Can you name any of them?
Some of them will actually get it off the fire department, the medical companies, I know that. Some of the bigger, bigger towns that I've been in, that's one way they got money.
Undertakers? And I guess that was not a fair question, although it's public information. Okay, this one, all right. The city has not had a full audit since the year ended June 30, 2010. There have been many changes in council members, not to mention two different city clerks. Is possible, many mistakes have happened without being questioned. How do you feel about the city having a full audit versus a scheduled annual exam? Patrick, I think I am thinking first.
I mean, if we get audited, and me being a new member, most I can do is comply to what they want to see, and that's something that I'm fully capable, I mean, fully willing to do, and help in whatever regard I can. But, yes, an exam would be much better than being audited.
Jim, I...
I mean, what do you mean? We don't want to get audited, correct? I mean, so we, we want the exam to go well, that's what I'm saying, but if we get audited and that is what happens, because there have been mistakes, then we'll, we'll have to comply.
I mean, for our company, I mean, we, we owe ourselves, and I don't know if we want to, we call them audits, but we do audits twice a year. We accept federal funding, so we have to make sure that, you know, all, everything is, get all of our eyes out of these cross, thousands and thousands, beat a fiber, and if we're off by a foot, then we've got federal employees all over us. So, I mean, if it hasn't been done since 2010, I would probably, you know, try to do some sort of, maybe not necessarily fight the IRS, but we take a look at it. Let's do some state orders and do some spot checks, and see if there's any big issues there. and see if there's any big issues there, or if there is, then we'll have to go through and maybe find consultants to help you work through those issues.
Who else?
I work with state auditors at county level. Every year we go through a full audit. I believe the city should have a full state audit, and I believe it's coming.
Do you think we should pay for it, or should we call it?
I would wait till your turn is called, honestly, because it's coming.
Not a full audit. It's only gonna be an annual exam.
Well, then I would probably call for an audit, honestly. County goes through one every single year. They're not, they're not affordable.
But the, the, the deal is, again, it's something.
It's expensive, yes.
Nine thousand dollars to call it in, and so I think this is where I go. I don't necessarily wanna know where everybody fiscally stands in, in their politics of government, but these are things that are gonna, especially this year, we've run into now roads, and we've gotta start fixing things, roads, and we've gotta start, but, but it's actually three clerks, I think, not that that matters.
Three what?
Yeah, Betty was still city clerk when the last, when was that?
I, I, I just read.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to...
It's, uh, two different clerks.
So in generally speaking, we...
Could be three, you know.
We haven't had one through three clerks, and the general rule of thumb is when you go and you lose a clerk and gain a clerk, you generally audit, not that anybody's done anything wrong, but it's checks and balances, and so, but the, but it's money. It costs money to call an audit. And so I think that's kind of some of the driving behind, maybe I'm not behind the question, would be, it's a fiscal thing that you're gonna have to probably vote on and consider that, you know, it's, it's an expense.
Well, and one of the things you can do too is every year the city, which this for me is inside village, every year the city pays into a pot. You can always contact the state and see if you can pull those funds out of that pot and have an audit done.
Correct.
So, but essentially you have it paid for.
Which is the council's decision, so if you're on, it's something that you all need to think about.
Okay, I just did the time check. You guys have been at for an hour and 15 minutes, which means you have 45 minutes left, if you wanna use it. I do have a few questions left, but I'd really like to hear the community ask questions. I know they need to.
One thing is, I know we don't get a lot of people coming to the council meetings, but I hear a lot of people complaining about the city and what they're not doing, and it would be nice if there'd be some way that we could get more people to come to the council meetings instead of bashing the council, and they don't have a clue what they're talking about. With that said...
And bashing the mayor.
Well, you're part of...
No, I said the...
With that said, how many times do you want us here? Have you attended a council meeting? And if not, why not?
Twice.
Every time, oh yeah.
Twice.
Um, Mr. Bass?
I have not attended one for the last 12 months. Um, there, there's nothing pressing. I've seen the enthusiasm, but there's nothing pressing that I was, that I needed to show up for.
Um, I did make this last month. It was a miracle. Um, I have tried to make them since Jamie has become the police officer, so I've been going for the last three years. This last year has been, I've trickled off due to having some foster kiddos. Um, but, I mean, even if I'm not elected on House, I still like to keep going and be nimble.
I made it almost every one for the last four years before that, so I took a little break this year.
Um, I have not been to a Sutherland city council meeting in a very, or, very long time, if not ever. Um, I just moved back to the area about three months ago.
I've been to the last two city council meetings.
One other thing I would like to say though, is I have read every single council minute since I stopped paying so many clerks, so.
I do have a question. Um, when Becca was mentioning Jamie, and she's with the police department, I do have a question. Will you find that you're going to, is it gonna be a conflict of interest for you? Um, let's say that there's a problem with the police department or something, and we have to talk about what's going on in the police department, and you're on the council. How are you gonna handle that?
Um, well, I mean, depending. Um, obviously I won't be, I won't vote on budget or wages or anything like that. Um, I will abstain from my vote if it is a problem. Um, I don't think that it will be a problem, um, between us, or I would hope that nobody else would have. I mean, I wouldn't think so, but I would abstain from my vote. Um, but like I said, keep going to the Iowa League, learning, um, of what a city council member is.
Well, I was just wondering about that because, you know, there's times when we have a council meeting and we talk about things that we don't make public. And if we were discussing Jamie, I mean, I'm just using this as any example. If we were discussing Jamie, are you going to be objective enough to not go home and tell her?
Um, actually, it's great because we have that relationship, you know? I'm on the ambulance, she's on the police department. What I see is what I see, what she sees what she sees. We don't bring it home. That's our neutral ground. It's not somewhere that we bring those kind of problems.
Did you say that there's stuff the council discusses that isn't public?
No, I am.
Yeah, that's what she's referencing.
That's what I'm referencing.
Yeah, her talking about.
You mean like personnel?
Yeah.
Or bill of state purchases?
We have, we, we have a wage, we have a wage committee. We never have a quorum. It's not a, we don't, we don't discuss the personnel, unless the employee asks.
She's lovely at Jamie game, come on.
I am.
But my question's about, uh, what was the...
I don't know.
I don't have a top question, please.
Okay, um, alrighty. I'm gonna go show you some wrap-up questions here, so it'll maybe less than two hours, and y'all can have some more munchies and talk to them one-on-one or fill their ears or however it would work. Um, these kind of work together, at least in my mind. No, I'm gonna ask this one first. Are you gonna raise taxes?
We're at a cap limit now.
Honestly, for me, I, I can't answer that question. I haven't seen, I haven't seen where we're at financially, with the budgets and shortfalls or anything like that, revenue streams dropping off. Is there a new revenue stream in the pipe that we're looking at? Uh, so I, I couldn't answer that. I mean, I know, um, when we had the recycle van, I heard, what was that, like $2.50 a month?
Two hours.
I mean, she jumped, and I'm like, wow, this is really nice. I got this great big one I can recycle. And so there's a little tiny little yellow one that I cram everything in, and that poor guy's got a date out. But, so, I mean, it is what it is. But, I mean, it's what's needed, you know, it was not a lot, anything like that. But I just, I honestly, I don't know, so.
Are you gonna raise taxes?
What's it?
Are you gonna raise taxes and do it on again?
We used to do that.
You can't do that.
We could, we could have been doing this for a couple years.
We could have made a lot of money.
Another way is to increase property values, right?
Let's let me for it.
Okay, here's our wrap-up question. I'm gonna ask all three of these, and you can try and take it however you want. Um, what are you gonna do about street repairs? What do you see for the future of Sutherland? And what changes or improvements do you hope to bring to the council? There's three. Three questions. Okay. What are you gonna, what are you going to do about street repairs? You want to stop there?
Yeah.
Streets are key there.
So my question is, we're all on the money, how can we answer that question?
I mean, I've, you know, it's like any other plan project that we do, like if, um, address the worst-case areas first, depending on funds, what we have. I mean, you just gotta budget it, plan it, and then, you know, set aside funds for the city private, and you can only go as fast as the money.
Okay. Anybody want to dig into that one more?
I, I didn't hear anything.
You said the right thing.
I said the plan, you have a budget.
Plans, track, we must, that's what you have, the budget, planning, we just, y'all make me feel like an idiot.
Yeah, if you look at your budget, where you, where you can spend it, you pick the worst streets to fix first, and you just slowly.
Everybody thinks they're...
You never catch them.
No.
No, I know you never will.
What changes or improvements do you hope to bring to the council?
I, I would just like to reiterate that I would like to see the subcommittees work together a little bit more, stay on top of, of their areas so that it can be further discussed at actual council meetings, and, and that those subcommittees are bringing ideas to the table, you know, to work with, than, instead of kind of sitting there with a few general, these are the problems, and I don't know what we're gonna do about it, so.
Um, change to the council, um, obviously I'm a pretty young guy. I've got a lot of different ideas and some people in this room, probably, but I'm here to voice what the people want. Um, something new to the council would be, I'm, I'm obviously younger, I have a little bit different say, but just, you know, conservative thoughts. I want to get the council going, get people amped up to make changes, not to, you know, sit back, let's get it next month, stuff like that.
Uh, honestly, I don't know. I mean, we'd have to see what the new council looks like, how to work together, uh, see what the existing council members were before they left off, and if they're open to change with the new council members, and just kind of see how everybody chills together. And I honestly, honestly don't know until we get everybody in a new group together and see what the goals are.
Okay, the last one I've got, and I think there's probably half an hour left to socialize and one hour and a half to attack them, soon as we're up, right? What do you see for the future of Sutherland?
Well, one, I'd like to see, uh, more jobs come to town. That would give us more residents, and, um, I think that would be a good future to work towards for Sutherland.
With that being said, I'd love to see more businesses come to this industrial. I'd love to see them just build up, shop, bring their families, start some new, new businesses, or even older businesses that wanna grow, come to the industrial and, um, grow up.
Uh, I guess, I see it, I mean, I always look at it through the lens of my kids. I mean, I loved growing up in Sutherland, and I have tons of awesome memories, especially all the community members way back when. Uh, I see it as a good place to raise your kids, and, but I also understand that we need to bring in, try to bring in, incentivize more businesses coming into some of our areas that we have, um, just to, you know, kind of organically work for, um, revenue streams. Uh, and of course, clean up the, you know, it's not gonna be a fast process, but let's see if we can clean up Sutherland to the best of our ability to attract more people to want to move to Sutherland. I've had the same experience with it.
I just wanna keep our, you know, community safe and, and a good place to let your kids roam and run free, just like Jay said, when we were kids, you know, we ran wild, within reason, you know, amongst the community. And I would like to see that come back where you know that your kids are safe going down to the park, and, and, you know, at the same time, let's keep things beautiful and keep it moving forward, but within Sutherland standards.
For future Sutherland, I mean, we obviously want more jobs, more people. We want to beautify Sutherland. Um, I grew up here. I came back for an obvious reason. This is a great town, have a lot better school systems than the Des Moines area, a lot safer. Um, like Natasha said, we just wanna keep moving forward. We don't want more junk cars, more grass issues, more stuff like that. We want to keep Sutherland moving forward, bring businesses in, keep people coming. That stuff will fall online.
I just want to thank everyone up there tonight. I've been there two years ago, and you just kind of go, ooh, you know, it's a good little ride. But I think you all did well, and I think we owe them a round of applause. Also, there's an election coming up. Get out there and vote, because if you don't vote and somebody gets into that you don't like, I don't wanna hear about it. You know, unless you're up there voting for them, and that's what it's all about. Door knocking is an acceptable form of campaign. So just wanna, I'm on the corner high, um, I do have a couple of campaign signs in my yard, so I don't signal out, so whoever leaves signs, more signs, you can load it up. It's good.
Ditto.
And thank you.
I'm on the business tree. Load me up.
Thanks to Mary.
I'll let you know I'm on the lawn.
I think it just kind of shows that I've been here for years, and then Dan Wetherall started that. And, um, compared to some of the other smaller communities, I eat, I think Paulina, my first year running, didn't have anybody on the ballot. They were, they were frightened. And so the interest that everybody's showing, um, really feels good to me, and it makes me really excited. So I appreciate it. Somebody come and buy my vote.
Yeah.
Okay.